And join us in the pledge of allegiance and invocation. Lee Powers will lead us in the pledge of allegiance and Pete Miller will lead us in the invocation.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Heavenly Father, we come before you with humble hearts, seeking your blessing upon this city, its family, its workers, its first responders, administrators, and every residence. We ask you for your presence among us this evening. Guide our discussions and decisions so that we may serve the common good. Grant each member of this council the wisdom to lead faithfully, the courage to do what is right, and the compassion to serve those that we represent. Help us to listen with open minds, speak with humility, and act with integrity. Remind us that our work here is not just about policies and procedures, but about people and the trust they place in us. In your name we pray.
Item number three, citizens to be heard. The first citizen to be heard is Kenny Khan. Kenny, if you would come forward, tell us your name and address. The next is Mark Lucio. Mark, if you could be prepared to speak as soon as Kenny finishes.
Kenny Khan, sorry, Kenny Khan, 206 Cliffside Drive. I'm here regarding the hike and bike trail for Chavino Park. I just became aware of it. I have many concerns. For me, my main concern is for the risk to the beauty and the serenity and the quiet country atmosphere that's going to be damaged beyond repair. I'm concerned that the wildlife and the habitat that they live in will be negatively impacted. I'm also concerned for the citizens due to the influx of strangers coming in from other areas to use this hike and bike trail. The hike and bike trail is not for the citizens of Chavino Park. We do not want or need this. We don't understand the need for this project and we are completely against it. I have a list, I won't read it, but I have a list of names of people who couldn't be here, but they also have the same feelings about this. I'm sure you'll hear from them later on. And that's it. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Kenny. Mark and Lisa, you will follow Mark.
Yes, Mark Lucio. As a resident of Cliffside Drive, I want to share some concerns about the proposed Salado Creek Green Access Project. While I understand the intent is to promote recreation and connectivity, I believe it's important to we also weigh the potential downsides this project may bring to the neighborhood and the green belt itself. First, of course, the environmental impacts. Construction of a wide trail and new trailhead will inevitably disturb wildlife habitats, remove trees, and increase runoff into the creek. Paved services and adding parking risk erosion, pollution, and a loss of natural character that makes the green belt valuable to our community. Second, the neighborhood quality of life. Adding a trailhead near Saddle Tree and Windmill means more cars, more traffic, and more parking overflow into the residential streets. Increased food, foot, and bike traffic may also bring noise, litter, and even safety concerns from visitors who don't live here. What is currently a quiet, low-traffic area could change significantly. Third, the character of the green belt. Many of us enjoy the green belt because it feels wild and peaceful. Urbanizing it with paved paths, signage, and facilities could reduce that sense of natural space. There's also potential for conflicts between cyclist joggers and families sharing the same path, especially if the trail gets heavy use from outside of Chavino Park. Finally, of course, the financial responsibility. While the city may receive federal grant funding for construction, the long-term burden of maintenance, security, and landscaping will fall on our community. That could mean hidden costs for residents down the road. In short, while the goals of this project may sound appealing, the unintended consequences from environmental strain to increased traffic and neighborhood disruption could outweigh the benefits. Thank you.
Thank you, Mark. Lisa and then Christina Mantis.
Hi, my name is Lisa Lucio. My concern is also with the hike and bike trail. My concern is on the value of why we're doing this. Who is it for and why? And is it for our citizens of Chavino Park? Because I look around and how many of us truly are cyclists? And I'm not talking of your average biker, the one who goes for a Sunday bike ride, but the real cyclist. I don't see that very often in our community, and I feel these resources could be better allocated to crosswalks and safety provisions versus something that could negatively impact not only our community's safety, the crime rate, but also the environment that we live in. That's all.
Thank you very much. Christina Mantis, followed by Tom Keiser.
My name's Christina Mantis and I'm also a resident of Cliffside. We are halfway between two parks. There's Phil Harburger Park and then Eisenhower Park. We don't really need to create a park where we are. We are not a gated community. The Inwood Estates Community, which is on the other side of the green belt, is completely gated. Nobody else can access that trail from there except their neighborhood. We don't have that protection, so people are going to be using our neighborhood as a parking lot, as a public park, which is kind of bizarre. A lot of us are used to walking around, you know, walking our dogs. We see familiar faces. I walk to the bus from the house all the time. I see the same people walking around. It's going to be really odd to see people from other parts of the city coming into our neighborhood and using it as their own. So that, my concern is really, we have no protection to keep outsiders out if we do something like this. So I'm very concerned about the safety and the influx of traffic.
Thank you, Christina. Tom Keiser, followed by Louise Chemney. If y'all could be ready to speak, please.
Mr. Mayor and Councilman Tom Kaiser, looks like Kaiser but pronounced Kaiser. I live at, my wife and I live at 98 Saddle Tree, which according to this map here, this proposed parking lot, and let me back up a minute, we've lived there for 25 years. And off and on during those 25 years, I've been interested in that lot. And I have inquired over multiple occasions about purchasing that lot and putting in a sports court. And I was told over and over and over again, it's not available. And now I find out, kind of in a strange way, that it's being, I don't know whether the city or, I guess I don't have the power to change what apparently, you know, according to this, it looks like this has already been approved and we've already submitted the grant, you know? And now, you know, my fellow citizens are here scratching their heads saying, wait a second. This is what, we didn't bargain for this when we moved into this neighborhood. We just put bike paths along Northwest Military. We were all inconvenienced. We love our new streets. We love our new sidewalks. You know, can you imagine? You know, we have this wonderful, I guess, farmer's market every Sunday, and we find, you know, parking for those folks back here by the police station. But can you imagine the aesthetic appeal of putting a parking lot right across the street at the corner of Northwest Military and Saddle Tree that according to this information that I'm receiving, going to have bike racks, they're going to have water fountains, they're going to have trash and recycle? And I'll close with this. When we, you know, my wife and I spent, as other neighbors did, some money to asphalt our driveway, and I put in a pickleball court. So according to what I'm seeing here, this new parking lot is going to come right into the pickleball court, and I'm not real happy about that. So I take exception to that parking lot across the street. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Louise Chemney, followed by Maureen Memmy, I think. Maureen.
Good evening. I'm Louise Chemney. I live at 300 Cliffside. I've lived there for 48 years. I know the east side of the park like the back of my hand. I've walked it. I used to jog it when I was younger. And I usually, I used to think I was pretty in the know about what was going on in the park. I was, I've always been a member of the women's club. I've served on the tree committee. I've done all different things throughout the 48 years here at the park. But to my total disbelief and surprise, I learned back in June that the city council and city had planned a concrete hike and bike trail right straight through the middle of my community, like these other folks have talked about. So I'm not going to go back over every bit of that. But I thought the person who was telling me this was, you know, maybe had too many glasses of wine. I said, they're not going to do that. I said, why would they do that? They just widen the streets. We have, you know, people have all the room in the world to walk up and down, to ride their bikes. And so she said, oh, no, you have to look at the website. And I said, okay. And so she had to actually guide me to the spot on the website because it was under residence and it was about 22 or 23 jumps down to find it. And I read about it, and I just was, I was in total shock. And my husband and I talked about it. So I said, maybe we're just the only ones who don't know about it. So then we slowly but surely, we got through our street and started talking to people. They had knew nothing about it. I said, how is it possible that a city council could redesign the east side of the park, change our whole rural atmosphere, lay down another 30,000 square feet, that's a mile of concrete that they're proposing, 10-foot of concrete along our green belt along the cliff, which would mean taking, I have eight oak trees across from my house on the cliff. If you go 10 feet back, you would have to remove four to five 20-inch diameter oak trees to get your concrete pathway. And then Dale and I keep discussing, Dale's my husband, and we know where the primitive path is. We know where it is. It's at the bottom of, at the hill where 200 and 100 come together. We've been down that primitive path. I feel like, yes, the city could improve that, make it a little safer, especially for bikers. It's not real wide, but that would take very little money. And then I found that not only this thing was planned, but it was planned without any input from people on the east side. It was planned and also a grant was asked for from the Alamo Area MPO. And they showed on the grant that they're, that this thing is going to cost $1.2 million, and that's just an estimate. Because of course, by the time it's, you start building it, it's going to be, we all know so much more. So basically, in, you know, conclusion, we're going to tear down trees, push back mailboxes, go down people's front yards on Windmill. Then we're going to concrete over the green belt along Cliffside so that we can get a few more people over to this trail. And as somebody already mentioned, we already have sidewalks and bike trails all up and down Military.
Louise, if you could sum it up.
Yes, I'm trying to.
Well, you have spoken for a minute over, so.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Yes.
So basically, in conclusion, I'm appalled at the lack of transparency. I've asked twice for meetings. I've asked the mayor and Bill Hill for the meeting.
And we've offered to meet with you. Louise, your time is up.
Okay. And I also have asked Mr. Kukendall.
The next speaker is Maureen. Maureen, thank you very much. And Janice Schwab will be behind Maureen. Janice, if you could be prepared to speak after Maureen. Thank you.
Hello. My name's Maureen Memery. I'm at 406 Cliffside. I moved there in 1979 with an eight-month-old, a three-year-old, a six-year-old, and we've been there for 46 years, and we love it. I know you're going to time me. I think my main concern is, how did this happen? Did you all, you people right there, come up with this plan to do the sidewalk up Windmill? To do the mixed pathway on Cliffside? The parking lot? I don't know how that came up. Is it the parking lot that you want and you're using all this other stuff to justify the making of the parking lot? I can't believe that you would actually want to attract people not from Chavino Park, people from San Antonio, to come to our city, increasing police protection, people coming to our city. We don't, there's a lot of crime out there. There's a lot of crazies. You know, I don't believe that you all really could want that for our city. I talked to the mayor about Cliffside Drive and the alternate pathway. He told me that this was a safety issue. He relayed a story, I don't know if it's true or not, about a little old lady coming down a street somewhere far away, and there was an accident, and he didn't want that to happen in Chavino Park. And I said, you're not going to stop people from walking hand in hand, power walking, whatever, on the street. They're not going to go on that pathway. I'm telling you, he told me, well, we can ticket them. He told me that. So I don't know where this is all coming from, but everyone I have talked to in my neighborhood, I called everybody on my block, left messages, everyone I spoke to was totally against it and had no knowledge of it. So I'm just speaking and saying, somebody who's been there for a long time, it's not good. And I really, I don't know if you can do anything. It's probably going to get funded according to what I heard, but I'd like to know at some point, maybe later, where this all came from. Thank you.
Thank you, Maureen. Janice, followed by David.
I'm Janice Schwab, 108 Windmill. I've lived here 30 years, and I spoke to you all Monday night and at the council meeting. I'm strongly still opposed to the sidewalk going down Windmill Road. I love here, I love living here, as we all have. However, since I have moved, I have, since I moved back over to the east side, I lived over on Longbow for 25 years. I had 11 live oak trees removed and foliage from my property. I didn't know that was going to happen. There goes the ambiance there. I had then a beautiful 3-by-20 bridge to look at out in front of my yard. The next thing that happened was the white curb that runs down like a runway, airport runway down our street. And now I'm forced to embrace a sidewalk down Windmill Road. Why Windmill? I don't understand why we have been picked on. Nevertheless, I will say that I noticed that the Stroll magazine interviews a resident of the city, and the question they always ask, always is, what attracted you to Chavino Park? And they always say, the quiet, the large lots, the oak trees, and the green space. Never do I hear, oh, I want the height trailheads, I want the sidewalks, and I want parking lots. Never. So I'm asking the mayor and the aldermen to address our concerns with an explanation which justifies and provides an alternate solution or a compromise, let's show some good faith here, and to work with your constituents. A short meeting, maybe a walk at our rapidly disintegrating park. And it's our community. And I ask that there has to be a way to get all involved and satisfied to a certain degree. I, like everyone else, did not know about this until Maureen came to me and Louise, who eloquently presented 21 reasons why it shouldn't happen. She even spoke with Alderman Kukendall, which who I appreciate giving the time. I talked to Mr. Hill. He, I appreciate him giving me the time. And I think all of you, it would be nice if you'd have a meeting with us or, I don't know, but communicate with us and let us know why this is happening and how we can stop it or at least fix it. Thank you.
Thank you, Janice. David Garcia, followed by Dale Chemney.
Good evening. David Garcia, 100 Windmill. Mr. Mayor, members of the council, city manager, thank you for the opportunity to speak regarding the topic of the hike and bike trail. I have been, I am a resident here of Chavino Park for 30 years and enjoy, as many have already stated, the ambiance of a rural community and concerned about the safety, environmental. We can rehash all of those things. But more importantly, the whole notion of having people from, potentially from outside of Chavino Park coming up and down our street, just not, is not very appealing. I hate to think that this may have an adverse effect on our property values in the long term, because there's people who want this rural setting. The larger lots add to that, of course, but not with all this traffic up and down our streets. So I am opposed to this project, but do welcome the opportunity to meet with members of the council, with city manager, so that we can discuss the reasons why this came about and what are their alternatives. If there's a potential, particular reason why this has to happen, what other alternatives potentially can exist to have this project work inside the city of Chavino. But I also agree with the comments that were made, that we have parks not too far from where we are. I also have to agree with somewhat the clandestine nature of how this was not communicated. We hear about the other projects that are going on in the city, but this one, absolutely nothing. Again, welcome the opportunity to participate in some future discussion on how we can remedy the situation. Thank you.
Thank you, David. Dale Chemney, followed by Nancy Gonzalez.
I'm Louise's husband. So I agree with everything that's been said and, you know, that there has to be an alternative. Conrad, you brought during the prayer that your job is to listen to the citizens and do what's right for the citizens in their best interest. And as you've heard tonight, it's not in our best interest. If I was sitting in your position, I would come up with an alternative, maybe something as simple as improving the access to the trail from the two ends of Cliffside. You know, there's an entrance up by the 400 and there's an entrance down by the 200. I've been down those things, and they are dangerous. I twisted my ankle one time. And as I get older, I'm sure it's going to become more dangerous, particularly if you're taking a bike down there. How about just putting a bike rack next to the entrance where we can lock our bikes and walk down a safe trail? It's cheap and it won't piss anybody off. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Okay, Nancy Gonzalez, followed by Peggy Bashkarov. Ashkarov, yes, thank you.
So I'm Nancy Gonzalez, and I live at 308 Cliffside. I've lived there for six years. I'll just be, I echo the sentiments of everyone that's spoken before me. I want to say that we residents choose to live in Old Chavino rather than other parts of Chavino for the country feel, for the bigger, more rural lots with lots of biodiversity in the plants and trees that provide food and shelter for an abundance of wildlife. New hardscape that removes greenscape, noise, and litter create a hazard to our precious natural environment and infringes on our privacy and enjoyment of our property, our neighbors in our neighborhood. None of the residents that I have spoken to want this urbanization. I encourage you to be, well, I encourage you to please call a town hall meeting just with questions and answers, just on this issue. And also, I would like you to be courageous and withdraw the application for the grant for the hike and bike trail. Thank you.
Thank you, Nancy. Peggy, and Peggy will be followed by David Sixt.
Hi, it's Peggy Bashkarov.
Okay, thank you.
Nobody gets it right, so don't worry. Some people think I'm related to Burschenkov, who is a famous Russian ballet dancer.
Ballet dancer.
Yeah, well, I'm not. Anyway, I don't want to repeat a lot of the things that people said because I agree with just about all of them. My husband and I moved to Chavino Park because we're like an island in a big city. I mean, we have an environment that I don't, I don't know anybody else who hasn't, unless you're over in Holotus, and then you get wild pigs. But that means a lot. My grandchildren come and they love the deer. I love the deer. More traffic is going to scare them off. The other thing is, I wanted to know if it's possible to get a copy of the grant. I used to run, started and ran a non-for-profit, and I am familiar with grants. Is fencing, new fencing in that grant, the cost of that grant? Because if you go over there and look, the fencing is not safe. And one of my neighbors told me that actually at one point in time, a horse went off. But if you can imagine little kids and their parents stop, or even, or they're ahead of their parents or behind the parents, and they get off and they wander over there, that fence is not safe at all. Also, I guess I said it all, and I thank all of you for listening, and I thank my neighbors for standing up for this.
Thank you very much, Peggy. David, followed by Greg Gibson. Greg, if you could be ready to speak after David finishes.
My name's David Sixt, and I live at 99 Windmill Road. You know, I really came here to just confirm all of these eloquent messages about this trail. I too was just slapped in the face about this. I had no idea this was going to happen. I was playing golf with a friend of mine, saying, hey, what do you think about the sidewalk going down in front of your road, in front of your house? I said, I don't understand this. He said, oh, it's in the Chavino information there. I said, where? And he told me, and I searched for it, couldn't find it. Next week I played with him, I can't find that. So finally, after digging through all the minutia on that side, I did find it. And, you know, to my surprise, I had not heard about it. And I just can't understand why we weren't informed. There was some kind of survey passed out, some kind of flyer put on our doors. You know, when they were constructing this, you know, all this new construction on Northwest Military and down the streets, we got constant text messages from the, you know, construction people about what was going to happen next. I just don't understand why you didn't tell us. And I know you'll say, well, I was there, you just needed to find it. I just think this was kind of a, kind of a slap in the face to us, that we're not given a chance to voice our opinions on these things long before it happens. I don't know if this is a done deal or not. Listening to some of these people, it sounds like this is a done deal. Is it a done deal? Am I allowed to ask you that question?
It's not an agenda item. The grant application has been filed. The decision will be made by council after the grant decision has been made.
And if the grant decision is...
I can't, it's not an agenda item, and so I can't talk about it. I just shared facts with you.
Okay, now, one thing I want to bring to your attention, I don't know if you've seen this, Louise Chemney presented to me anyway, are these 21 items. Every one of them, you know, lets us know that this is something that we should not have.
Yeah.
And I just want to vehemently express my disapproval of this and hopefully...
And we'd be happy for you to provide those to Bill because I don't know if the council members have seen those.
Okay. I will do that, or I'll ask Louise to. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much. Appreciate that. Greg, followed by John or Susan Willings, one of the two of you.
Greg Gibson, I'm at 304 Cliffside Drive. My wife and I have been there about 20 years. So I recently learned as well about the city that submitted for the grant to construct the hike and bike path from Northwest Military to Salado Creek via Windmill and Cliffside. I'm against the project. I was aware that there were long-term plans for a potential entrance to Salado Creek off of Cliffside, but was never aware of the 10-foot hike and bike path that would run along Cliffside and Windmill. We love living in Chavino Park, especially old Chavino Park. We love the country, living in the city feel and charm, and I just feel that constructing a hike and bike path along Cliffside and Windmill would change this dramatically. Significant brush would obviously need to be cleared, trees would need to be removed, and it will also invite, as others have said, non-Chavino Park residents through our peaceful, quiet area. So again, I'm firmly against this project. And the other thing that really bothers me is that, you know, and it's been, people have talked about it, but there's been no communication or outreach with the citizens of Chavino Park that this is directly going to affect those of us that live on Cliffside and Windmill where the project is proposed to be built. So the only reason I learned about this project is that one of my neighbors on Windmill last Sunday took time out of his Sunday to go door-to-door to make sure that we were all aware of what was going on. Or otherwise, my wife and I would still be in the dark. So the lack of communication and outreach is very troubling and really unacceptable, in my opinion. I ask you to reconsider building these hike and bike paths that will undoubtedly change the nature and character of the place that we all love to call home. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you. John or Susan, and then Vanessa Lyons will follow. John or Susan, y'all, it's one or the other.
Okay.
Yeah. Well, you could, you could have signed up separately, but you signed up...
She did. Yeah, she signed up separately. Yeah. Yeah, she has a very short comment.
Okay, that's fine, Susan, but y'all signed up.
Yeah.
You can speak, I'm fine. I'm just saying, it says John and Susan, and that would be two different lines for John. No, no, but I'm, please, please, Susan. Yeah, John.
Okay. First, I do want to compliment the city council for all the work that you did on the roads in Chavano Park. I think it was so needed for flood control and for, I think, for beautification. It really has worked. It sure has worked for me. My wife and I have walked up and down Cliffside for most of the 42 years that we have lived here. So we're longtime residents, longtime walkers. You've probably seen us on the road. Maybe we dress funky sometimes, but we do really enjoy this area. We're comfortable here. This has been a place that after one year of living here, I went to somebody's house who lived here on Saddle Tree, and I looked at this area and I thought, "Oh, I hope I can live here one day." And that opportunity came two years after that. So, we've been very happy residents. I think the road changes and the flooding things that happened are good. I think this project is not good. I feel like this is abrupt, it's intrusive, and it's not something that I think will add to the charm and the peaceful kind of nature that we have in our streets. We already have access here, cars, bicycles, to pedestrians. We also have access points along the Salado Creek and a couple of areas that are not far from here. And it looks like, it just seems like it's an unnecessary thing, and certainly not in favor for all the different residents here. I'm looking also at the busyness of Cliffside compared to Northwest Military. I'm finding it much harder to get out on Northwest Military. There is so much traffic, it's unbelievable. And when you're coming back home again and trying to either turn left into our street or come in from the other side, you've got people tailgating you, anxious drivers, especially if you have to turn without that middle lane there and directly into your street. And if the visibility is not good, for example, going into Cliffside, I have nearly hit a car that's maybe up a little bit that I couldn't see because of all the traffic. Now, if we open up this area to more traffic, what do we have? An even worse problem, and it's with strangers. And it's also with people who maybe don't have the best intentions when they come into Chavano Park. So, I think that's going to be a burden on the police department. A burden on the police department means more people, more personnel, more expenses. And it just seems like the peacefulness of this area will really be disrupted pretty badly. And I feel sorry for the residents on Windmill and Cliffside who are directly, directly involved there. That's really going to tear up their properties and look really pretty bad. So, anyway, those are my thoughts. I don't want to repeat everything else that's been said, but thank you very much for your attention and us really thinking about and considering these things for us. Thanks.
Thank you, John. And after Susan will be Vanessa Lyons.
I have to say, I was so impressed, Mr. Miller, with the words of your prayer. I hadn't thought about saying this tonight, but the content and the spirit and the heart of that really told me something about if it's really true, if you all really meant what that prayer said. I would think you would really want to hear what people are saying tonight and consider the words of the people of the city. And I would just beg that you would withdraw that proposal. My one comment is, a good deal, a free deal is not always a good deal because it comes with things that sometimes that you really don't want. And just because it would be, quote, "free" and all this money to build something, I don't think it's, I don't think it's a good deal. And I would just encourage you, please, to withdraw that and to just let our city be like it is now. Thank you.
Thank you, Susan. Vanessa followed by Mary Ann Heisel.
Actually, Mayor Werner, I was not aware that when I signed up, I had to sign my husband up separately. His name is Christian Lyons. So, if you would allow him a moment to speak up.
I'll let him substitute him for you.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
No, actually, I would like to speak for myself as well.
Okay, you need to actually sign up, I'm sorry. You can sign up at our next city council meeting.
Okay.
If I allow everybody to come in after the fact, then I have to allow everybody to come in after the fact, and I apologize.
Mayor, can we both use the two minutes and 34 seconds remaining?
No, and we'll start Vanessa's time over, or you may have your time separate.
Okay.
But everybody needs to sign in. So if you would, start Vanessa's time over.
Okay. Well, at this point, I want to start off by saying I'm concerned about the dismissive nature of how you seem to be interacting with the residents of Chavano Park when they're expressing their concerns. You seem to be smiling or smirking while the residents are speaking to you about these concerns, and that is, that angers me. I have served 25 years in the military, and this is where I chose to retire. This path directly will, you know, wipe out the green belt where we have so much wildlife. As it is now, we already have crime in our neighborhood. We've had packages stolen from in front of my house. I can't tell you how many times my husband has had to go out there to investigate strange cars that are parked in front of our home. This seems, it's just very disturbing how this came about. Our mayor pro tem's house, there's obviously some type of collision that's happened in front of his house based on the nature of his fence, and I'm just shocked that, that we would invite this into our neighborhood. And I think everyone is basically saying that they feel betrayed how this came about, and it's very concerning, and I believe that you have an elected position.
Thank you, Vanessa. And I apologize for smiling. I try to smile when I'm up here, always. I apologize for you assuming I'm being dismissive. Mary Ann. And behind Mary Ann will be Stephen Schneider.
Good evening, everyone. I don't envy y'all having to sit up here and, and take questions, although I know it's part of the job. I want to say thank you to you for your service because I know how difficult it is, and I don't envy you. I am surprised to see that despite all the tools at the city's disposal, there still seems to be a problem, fully including and involving residents and informing them of things that can impact them. Having experienced the work and effort the city put into informing residents about the green space that we have out here, I'm wanting to understand if this is really for residents. Was the same work slash effort put into the Cliffside hike and bike trail effort? And by that I mean, did the city hire consultants to create a survey to determine need or desire? Were there surveys sent out and I missed them? Was there a feasibility study done? Do we know what the maintenance cost concerns might be and are they accounted for? The biggest thing that I had asked myself when I found out about it, and it was just recently as well, I live, I live on Fawn Drive. I've lived in New Old Chavano, I guess is what it's called now. I live in Old Chavano. And where the parking lot is proposed, I heard Mr. Kaiser talk about it. It's right there up against his property. Was he even asked a question about it? And by show of hands of people who ride bikes or hike, they don't necessarily follow a trail. So, this park, this parking lot is going to be on Saddle Tree, which connects right to Cliffside. So why wouldn't those people that park there, who likely won't be residents, go right down Saddle Tree to Cliffside? And that's a whole other group of folks that might want to talk to. So, I see my time is up. I would just ask that you be courageous and pull the grant application and tell there's a clear consensus that the people that you serve, and especially the people who are impacted, make it clear to you that this is what they want.
Thank you, Mary Ann. Stephen Schneider followed by, is it Eli Fetson? Stephen Schneider, okay. Eli Fetson. Is it Fetson? Yes, please. Yes, now.
Good evening, thank you. I am here on behalf of Part-Time Ambulance. Part-Time Ambulance, if you have not heard, it is an app you can use. Many community members can download for free on your phone. There are many people in the community that need assistance with CPR, first aid, mouth-to-mouth in some cases. Our company, based out of India, we have a medical director that oversee the program and the training. We are looking to implement our services here in Chavano Park. The ambulance drivers use their own vehicles to respond to real 911 emergencies in the community with the, when the traditional ambulance is more than 10 minutes from the scene. Statistics show that when a responder does not respond within 10 minutes to the scene, someone's life could be in grave danger. We recently polled residents in San Antonio that live here, and nine out of 10 were interested in cutting costs to city services to save taxpayer money. Our program saves an average of $400,000 per year from the city budget. We looked at some salaries in the city, and many are making well over six figures a year as a EMT basic level. Most people don't think that responders should be making $100,000, $150,000 a year. So we were able to implement a program that would save a lot of money and put people in the community to work. We could staff five ambulance drivers for the same cost as one fireman EMS driver. That is what you have now. I wanted to maybe talk about the Second Chance Program. The Second Chance Program gives felons a job opportunity to get into exciting field of EMS. Most people that are ambulance drivers for Part-Time Ambulance have known serious felonies such as drug conviction and DUI. We also give many migrants an opportunity to work under a work visa program where they learn to speak English and medical, medical Spanish on the job we give training. We do have a recent graduate here tonight that will speak, hopefully, maybe after me, I'm not sure. She signed up separately.
She signed up separately.
So, that is all I have. If you have a question, I'm available.
Thank you, Eli, very much.
Thank you.
Floozy, and you did not put down your last name. If you'd state your name, please.
My name is Floozy.
And your last name.
Good evening. I'm sorry?
And your last name.
Bogley.
Bogley.
Yeah. I'm part of the Second Chance Program with Part-Time Ambulance. I had a prior conviction for drugs a long time ago, which precluded me from being an EMT, but I'm six weeks sober now. I was able to train with Part-Time Ambulance and run real 911 calls, and I love it. It's super easy, and if anyone watching wants to join, you can join too. We have people from 16 years old all the way up to 85 that I have worked alongside with. It's a means for stay-at-home moms to make extra money and college students that are trying to pay for school. We have a 10-minute training video in the app that citizens in the community can download. The video covers drug administration, bleeding control, and advanced airway. I have a service animal cat named Jinx that I take along with me. She accompanies me on all psychiatric calls and is there to console the patients. This is a great alternative to using dangerous sedative medicine. Recently, a firefighter paramedic in South Dakota accidentally overdosed a patient who was having a psychiatric emergency. We have never had such an incident. We think you should consider replacing your fire department with Part-Time Ambulance, a much more affordable service. I'm excited to announce that starting tonight, we'll be responding into Chavano Park whenever your fire department EMS is more than 10 minutes away from the scene of the emergency. We have your fire department frequencies plugged into our scanners. We have at least four different drivers that are going to be on tonight. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Floozy. And David Lebowitz.
Good evening. My name is David Lebowitz. I, my wife and I live at 416 Cliffside Drive. And my wife and I raised our kids on bike way in the 80s and 90s, and then we made the mistake of moving out to the Dominion for a while, and now we've moved back home. But we've been now on Cliffside for about four years, and one of the reasons we chose that street was because of the solitude and the, the lots were larger, and it was just quieter and more peaceful. Renovated a home there, and, you know, we're very happy there. But, you know, I, I heard about what, I heard about this subject matter last night, literally. And, you know, I served for the better part of a decade in the Texas House of Representatives, and one of the things that was pounded into me as a young representative was process, process, process. And when you, you're trying to get something accomplished, the first thing you do is you identify all of the stakeholders, and you figure out who's going to be affected by this bill that I'm trying to turn into a law. And then you have meeting after meeting after meeting with these stakeholders, and you try to figure out what their concerns are, and you try to arrive at some sort of consensus as to what everyone can, can live with in terms of a reasonable compromise. And I, I read the newsletter religiously. I never saw anything about what was going on with respect to this subject matter. It, it, it's kind of disturbing to me that, that all these folks are standing up here, some of whom have lived continuously here for decades, and they didn't even know about it. And it, I just don't think that's, that's the way that, to run a railroad. I really don't. And I think when you take a step back and when you invite the stakeholders to the table and figure out what, what they want to get accomplished or don't, and then, and then go from there. And by the same token, I've sat in on a lot of different dog and pony shows where the Texas Department of Public, of Transportation was talking about wanting to toll 1604 and all these different types of examples, and they, a lot of times, what was being presented to the citizenry was actually almost all but a done deal. And what the, what was being presented was just for show. So hopefully, that won't be the case here. Hopefully, you all, ma'am, gentlemen, you'll take a step back and you'll listen to the folks who, who, you know, who brought you to the dance and, and hear them out and, and then, and then make a decision accordingly.
David, thank you very much for your comments. I do appreciate it. That completes the Citizens to Be Heard portion of this agenda, which brings us to item number four, City Council Comments. Lee, do you have anything that you'd like to share? Pete.
Yeah, I'd also like to extend my appreciation. I, you know, I know this takes time away from your schedules, and to come here and take time and to share your views is very important. You know, I think Spinoza said, no matter how thin you slice it, there's always two sides to every story. And it's always important to hear both sides of the story and make sure that we have all the facts before we move forward with decisions. So, thank you very much for, for coming out tonight. And I'd like to make one other comment, Mayor.
Yes.
And I'd also like to recognize, you know, we're getting towards the end of the budget season, and I just want to condemn or commend our staff for just all the effort that they've put in to doing that. This is a multi-month process that, to get all this together, to do the research, and, and it's really, they make it look easier and easier every year. So, so thank you for all the effort that you've put into that.
Thank you very much, Pete. Conrad?
I'd like to thank everybody for being here. I don't know if I've, I don't know how far we go back, Lee, it's been a while, but appreciate everyone being here. For those who don't know, I do live on Cliffside, and we're coming off a budget... For those who don't know, I do live on Cliffside, and we're coming off a budget season that is extremely long, long hours, and these folks that work for all of us do a fantastic job of keeping our budget in line. It's really important that we watch that and keep it buttoned up. And thank you all for all the extra efforts that you put in.
Maggie.
Yes, I want to thank everybody for coming. I mean, this is very nice. We sit here for months, and nobody comes, nobody comes to the meetings. So I really do, and we do appreciate you all being here, letting us know your feelings. I can assure you that this will be a good topic for us. It's not on the agenda tonight, but I've taken notes, as everyone has, and again, thank you for coming.
Buddy.
No, welcome everyone. It's always good to have citizens show up for the meetings. Unfortunately, this only happens when something like this comes up. I wish we had proper representation from the rest of the city. It seems like only a couple of streets showed up, and it affects all the citizens of Chavano Park, but thank you for your contribution and showing up and letting us hear your voices.
And I'm going to take a few moments. I normally don't speak during the citizen comment following portion on Councilmember comments. We heard your message this evening, and I know that many of you are probably devastated by the last week. You know, we haven't had a series of events occur kind of back-to-back since 1968. Martin Luther Keaton was killed in April of 68, and in June of 68, Robert F. Kennedy is assassinated, and we don't have assassinations in America, and it puts all of us on edge. And then the very next day, we come to the 24th anniversary of 9/11, and it is a day that is still hurts. You know, there were over 3,000 people that died. The Twin Towers, you know, it's a day of numbers. There are 2977 people who died. And of those, our first responders, 343 firemen running into the buildings, 72 police officers trying to get people out of the buildings. The amazing thing is those buildings would have held 25,000 people on a general business day, and it's 2,900 who have lost their lives. And then we go over to the Pentagon, and the Pentagon's another 187 men, women, children, 125 service members, people in the airplane not knowing what's happening. And then there's Starksville, Pennsylvania, 44. And there were two unique people that were involved in Starksville, a guy named Tom Beamer and a 911 operator named Lisa Jefferson. Todd sneaks away, is hidden from everybody, calls 911 to tell what is happening with the airplane. And Lisa confirms that there have been two planes that have flown into the tower. And Todd knows what's going to happen, and he asks Lisa to call his wife, which she says she's going to do, and she says, "I need to get you with the FBI." And so there's an Agent Gibson, and his name is lost, his first name is lost to history, and they're talking about 911, and the FBI agent says, you know, "They hit the Twin Towers, and they hit the Pentagon, and we're assuming that they're going to go to the Capitol or the White House." Well, in the background, Todd has been talking to other people on the plane, and that's just not an acceptable solution for the people on the plane. Todd asks Lisa to pray with him, and so they pray in the moment, and shortly thereafter, he leaves his phone on, and you can hear Todd's immortal words, "Let's roll." And instead of winding up somewhere around the Capitol, the plane goes down in Starksville. We are blessed to be Americans. We are blessed for you to be able to come here today and to express your concerns. And we are happy to talk about your concerns and about how the timeline got compressed on us, and how you don't actually know what's going to happen because you've never been through this process before, and that sometimes success comes faster than you ever expected. We will be talking with you. We appreciate the fact that our neighbors have come to be with us this evening. We share a common heritage, and in fact, we're very blessed this evening, and I hope that you all will stay for the proclamation that we will give to the Daughters of the American Revolution from the Chavano Park chapter this evening. Together, we go forward, and there is no alternative other than to go forward. Okay, this brings us to item number five. Presentation, Commentations, and Announcement. A Proclamation for Constitution Week. Lee, I'm going to turn it over to you.
Ladies and gentlemen, I want to read-
Turn on your mic, please.
Thank you, sir. I'd like to read to you the preamble to the United States Constitution and a little history. "We, the people of the United States, in order to form a more perfect union, establish justice, ensure domestic tranquility, provide for the common defense, promote the general welfare, and secure the blessings of liberty to ourselves and our posterity. Do ordain and establish this Constitution for the United States of America." Some of the most beautiful prose ever written. I call your attention to the cascade form, establish, ensure, provide, promote, secure, ordain, and establish. This was not the first Constitution of the United States. The first was called the Articles of Confederation. This document preceded, succeeded it March 4, 1789, and it survived nearly 250 years with only 27 modifications. We call them amendments. Before we had the United States Constitution, before we had residency on this vast continent we live in, prior works by man and God include the Ten Commandments, the Code of Hammurabi, the Magna Carta in 1215, the true establishment of democratic rights for men to challenge their government. Then on the very first time we had something on the United States, or what became the United States soil, the Mayfair Contract, signed in 1620 by 41 men, because women at that time had no vote. How foolish were the men. I'd like to point out to you that we live under a constitution that some people call it a living document, others disagree with that. All I know is it is a constitution that no other nation on earth has ever enjoyed the freedoms that it provides, and I thank God I was born in the United States of America. Thank you.
Thank you, Lee. This evening, we are joined by Wendy Wilson, Vice Regent for the National Society, Daughters of the American Revolution, Old Chavano Chapter, Rita McSorley, Constitution Week Chairperson, and various other members of the organization. It is our privilege to recognize y'all's return back to Chavano Park, and we were so pleased to have you with us for Independence Day, and we're very pleased to have you with us this evening. Our proclamation reads, "Whereas the Constitution of the United States of America, the guardian of our liberties embodies the principles of limited government in a republic dedicated to the rule of law. And whereas September 17, 2025 marks the 238th anniversary of the framing of the Constitution of the United States of America by the Constitutional Convention, and whereas public knowledge of the Constitution fosters informed and engaged citizenship, strengthens civic institution, and promotes respect for the rule of law. And whereas it is fitting and proper to accord official recognition of this magnificent document and its memorial, memorable anniversary. Now therefore, I, Robert Warner, Mayor of the City of Chavano Park, on behalf of the entire City Council and citizenry, hereby proclaim September 17 through the 23rd, 2025 its Constitution Week in the City of Chavano Park, Texas." I do want to point out that we know that today is the 15th, and that the 17th is the middle of the week. The week is set by Congress, and so it is always the 17th through the 23rd. We actually know what days they are, and we're not, we didn't have a typo there. It is intentional. At this time, I would call forward the ladies from the Daughters of the American Revolution, and please come up to receive your proclamation.
(inaudible)
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 It's so good to be here and to see government in action. We couldn't have picked a better day, could we?
(laughing)
Good job, ladies.
The Constitution is very important to the Daughters of the American Revolution because it was our ancestors, our families, that fought for this document. In the middle 50s, when I was in grade school, the DAR asked the Congress to create Constitution Week, and it was passed by Congress and went into effect, I believe it was 1955. And so that's how Constitution Week came about. We also, as DAR members, are so proud to have the only monument to the Constitution in Washington, DC, and it is in the form of a hall. It's most widely known for things, concerts, game shows, graduations, that sort of thing. If you're ever in Washington, DC, we also have a museum, and our offices, and a genealogical library. These buildings, I did not know when I was not a member, I didn't know I was eligible to go in that building. I thought it was just for those special people, those daughters. It's open to the public, and you owe it to yourself to go see some of the things. Texas has a room, for instance. We're all very proud of that. But if you're interested at all in genealogy, great library, just a fun thing to go see, and it's only a block from the White House. In fact, it's often used in films and movies because there are so many similarities of halls and rooms and how they're decorated. What was, West Wing is one of the, one of the shows that used our building, so thank you very much.
Thank you.
(applause)
Thank you all very much.
Thanks for coming.
Wendy.
All matters considered under this item are considered routine by City Council and will be enacted by one motion. There will not be separate discussion of these items. If discussion is desired by any alderman on any item, that item will be removed from the present agenda, will be considered separately. Do we have a motion to approve and/or accept items 6.1 through 6.6? We have a motion from Lee, a second from Conrad. All in favor, say aye.
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 All opposed, same sign, the motion carries. City manager's report, all matters listed under this item will be considered, are considered routine by the City Council and will only be considered at the request of one or more aldermen. Coincident with each listed item, discussion will generally occur at the end of the regular agenda. Do we have any requests to pull any items on the city manager's report? There being no request, it brings us to item number 8.1. Discussion/Action: Combine the Citizens Tree Committee and the Chavano Park Beautification Committee into a single advisory body. Henceforth, name the Chavano Park Tree and Beautification Committee. Pete.
Yeah, so this is a follow-up to our meeting on last Monday, and the, I'm not going to go through the whole thing, but just as kind of a reminder, Maggie and I were there on the advisory committee, and one of the, we had conversations with several or multiple individuals, and one of the things that came out of our conversations was a recommendation to combine both the Citizens Tree Committee and the Chavano Beautification Committee. And there's a lot of kind of overlap, or there's some overlapping reasons why we would want to do this, as I mentioned last week, and so this is to move, move that forward.
Okay.
So, you want me to make a recommendation?
Yes.
All right. So I'd like to make a recommendation. I move that the Chavano Park City Council formally combine the Citizen Tree Committee and the Chavano Park Beautification Committee into a single advisory body. Herefore, hereforth, name the Chavano Park Tree and Beautification Committee, and their direct staff to revise the tree committee ordinance to reflect such change.
Okay, we have a motion. Do we have a second? Second. We have a second from Maggie. We're now open for discussion. There being no discussion, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign, the motion carries. This brings us to item 8.2, Discussion/Action: Selection Board Commissions and Committees. We have five committees to fill slots in at this time. At this point, I'm going to enter, I'm going to pull them a little bit out of order. I'm going to entertain a motion for the Investment Committee, one appointment for a two-year term. Do I have a motion?
Mayor?
Yes.
I'd like to make a motion.
Okay, Pete is making a motion.
That we nominate David Twill.
David Twill. Do we have a second?
I'll second that.
We have a second from Lee. Do we have any other nominations? There are no other nominations. Nominations are closed. All in favor, say aye.
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 All opposed, same sign, the motion carries. The second item I'm going to pull out of order will be item 8.2.2, Water Advisory Committee, three appointments to the water systems users only, water system users only, for two-year terms. Do I have a motion?
Mayor, I'd like to make a motion.
Okay, Pete?
I'd like to make a motion that we have Jason Beck, who is re-applied, Sean Fanning, and Al Whaley, who is re-applied and who is the chair.
Okay. Do we have an alternate slate of people to nominate? There being no additional nominations, do I have a second for that motion?
A second.
We have a second from Maggie. There being no other nominations, all in favor, say aye.
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 All opposed, same sign, the motion carries. This brings us to item 8.2.1, Planning and Zoning Commission for five appointments for two-year terms. Do I have a nomination?
Mayor, I'd like to make a nomination.
Okay, Pete?
First is Eric Frederick. Diane Stuvey, who is re-applied. Zach Taylor. William Thorpe, who is re-applied. And Krista Trippi, who is re-applied.
Okay, do we have any other nominations? Okay, do I have a second for the motion to appoint Eric Frederick to the Planning and Zoning Commission, Diane Stuvey, Zach Taylor, William Thorpe, and Krista Trippi?
A second.
Do we have a second from Buddy?
Second.
Is there any discussion? There being no discussion, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign. The motion carries, 5-0. Brings us to the Board of Adjustments, 8.2.5.
Mayor, I'd like to make a motion.
Okay.
Candidates-
Candidate's Jamie Alman, who is reapplied.
Jaime.
Thank you for that correction.
Okay, Jaime Alman, okay.
Charles Brahm.
Charles Brahm.
Brahm, who's reapplied. Thank you for that correction as well.
Sorry.
William Hartman, who's reapplied. And then two alternate positions, Christian Lyons as an alternate, and Joseph Valdez as an alternate.
Do we have a second?
Second.
We have a second from Lee. Do we have any further nominations? There being no further nominations, nominations are closed. We have a motion to approve Jaime Alman, Charlie Brahm, William Hartman as full appointments and as alternates, Christian Lyons and Joseph Valdez. All in favor, say aye.
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 All opposed, same sign. Motion carries five oh, which brings us to item eight point two point four, Tree Committee. Do we have any nominations?
Mayor, I'd like to make a nomination.
Okay, we have a motion from Pete. Pete?
The first is Lori Fanning. The second is Lawrence, he goes by Otter, Obst. O-B-S-T. And the third is Scott Simon, who is reapplied. And Mayor, there are no other, there's no other candidates to fill the other three open positions, and that is part of the, the recommendation to combine the Beautification Committee and, and the Tree Committee.
Okay, so at, at that point, I would ask you to consider as a, in addition to the three names listed, a motion that would include an invitation for all members of the Beautification Committee to join the Tree Committee.
Yes.
Okay. Okay, so we have, do we have a second? We have a second from Lee. So we have a motion to appoint Lori Fanning, Otter Obst, Scott Simon, and the balance of the people on the beautif, to invite the balance of the people on the Beautification Committee to join the combined committee. There being no discussion, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign, the motion carries five oh. This brings us to item, thank you very much, actually, that was remarkably short compared to some of the history that we've had in nominations. Item eight point three, Public Hearing, Crime Control and Prevention District Budget for the City of Chavano Park, Crime Control and Prevention District, twenty twenty-five, twenty twenty-six. It is now seven forty-three. Bill, do you have anything that you'd like to tell us?
Next slide. Having reviewed this in the Crime Control Prevention District Board Meeting just prior to the City Council Meeting, I think you all are familiar with this, I'm not going to go over all the details, I just will summarize by saying, there's a, a budget revenue of approximately two hundred thousand, expenses about seventy thousand. There are four major items here that we're considering. One includes the, the vehicle and body worn camera system leasing. One includes some IT hardware and software. The third item would be training for licensed police officers, and the fourth item, national night out, and that leaves an additional approximately one hundred and forty-two thousand that will go into fund balance, which will fund capital replacement items for the Police Department in the future. That summarizes.
Thank you very much.
The item.
Are there any citizens with questions, comments, or concerns concerning, concerning the crime control fiscal year twenty twenty-five, twenty twenty-six budget? There being no citizens, it is now seven forty-four. It brings us to item eight point four, Discussion Action Resolution R. Twenty twenty-five zero one three, adopting the Crime Control and Prevention Budget for the City of Chavano Park, Crime Control and Prevention District for fiscal year twenty twenty-four, twenty twenty-six, twenty twenty-five, twenty twenty-six. Bill?
Nothing further, Mayor.
Okay. Do we have a motion to approve Resolution R. Twenty twenty-five zero one three, adopting the Crime Control and Prevention Budget for the City of Chavano Park, Crime Control and Prevention District for fiscal year twenty twenty-five, twenty twenty-six? We have a motion from Lee, we have a second from Pete, we're now open for discussion. There being no discussion, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign, the motion carries five oh. Brings us to item number eight point five, Public Hearing, Proposed Annual Operating and Capital Budget, fiscal year twenty twenty-five, twenty twenty-six. Bill?
Next slide.
It is now seven forty-five.
So, just as a history and, and a brief summary for those folks that may be listening online afterwards. The city manager presented the proposed budget to city council on August fourteenth with a tax rate of point three one two seven four two per one hundred dollars of valuation, which was no change from last year. And then on the same night, city council then voted to propose a tax rate of point three one two seven four two per one hundred dollars of valuation. Now, the budget, you all have a copy of the budget, it's provided to you in Dropbox, and it'll be finalized after tonight, but I wanted to summarize a couple of things about the budget. Obviously, we have a very beautiful cover sheet. Thank you, Curtis, for putting that together. The next thing that you would find in the budget is the Distinguished Budget Presentation Award, which we have been awarded for the outstanding budget preparation since two thousand and fifteen. On the next page, and we'll talk about this later in one of the other agenda items, there's the mandatory statement, which says this budget will raise more revenue from property taxes than last year's budget by an amount of one hundred and thirty-seven thousand three hundred and forty-one dollars, which is a two point six eight percent increase over last year's budget. And of that, property tax revenue, to be raised from new property of this year is seventy-one thousand dollars. So, a lot of that came from new property. The budget then includes the, the city's vision statement or mission, a, a community profile, which is about four pages of general information. You get into a detailed table of contents, which will be linked into the PDF budget document where folks can, they'll look through the table of contents, they can decide to go to the fire department, they can click on the link, it'll take you right to the fire department's particular budget from there. The most important summary of the budget is the city manager's letter, which summarizes the major items of the budget, which I'll talk briefly about. So, you know, there is a introduction, there's the budget overview, strategic goals, major revenues, major expenditures, and changes in priorities and service levels. So to summarize a little bit of that, next slide. The budget's general fund expenditures, expenditures for the year, this would include seven point one five million of total expenditures of all funds, while, while the total expenditures of all funds is approximately fifteen point nine, and that includes the street reconstruction funding, which is a major part of that budget. When you look at the total taxable value of property, including the tax freeze, it's almost two billion dollars, it's actually one billion nine hundred and fifteen million dollars, and that represents a forty-six million dollar increase, or two point five percent increase from last year's valuations. Of that amount, the total taxable value of new properties and personal property was about twenty-three million. Of note, the average taxable homestead value for the average house is one million and twenty-nine thousand nine hundred and two dollars, and that is up twenty-seven thousand three hundred and eleven from last year's average taxable value, and that's about two point seven percent increase. So the city's portion of tax on an average taxable homestead value is approximately three thousand two hundred and twenty-one dollars, which is an eighty-five dollar increase. The total revenue collected from property taxes will be approximately five million two hundred and sixty-one thousand dollars, and again, about two point six eight percent over last year. The total additional revenue, or additional revenue available for the general fund is another one hundred and twenty-two thousand, or two point seven percent. Of note, we have a, a number of homes that are, that are freeze taxable, and so the freeze taxable value for all those homes equals six hundred and fifty million dollars, which is an increase of four point eight six percent from last year. There are a hundred, there are one thousand four hundred and ninety-six residential properties in Chavano Park total, and of those, seven hundred and thirty, seven hundred and thirty, which equals forty-eight point eight percent qualify for the over sixty-five tax freeze, so almost forty-nine percent, almost one in two people qualify, and they have their taxes frozen. Of note, the no new revenue rate is the rate that will generate the same amount of property taxes as the previous year on those properties that are on the tax roll. This proposed tax rate that we have proposed in the budget is lower than the calculation of the no new revenue tax. It actually raises more taxes, but if you were to look at same properties, it's lower than what is last year. We haven't ever come close to the voter approval tax rate, but that would be that tax rate that if you passed it would trigger a voter approval election, and that accounts for a three point five percent increase for operations. That proposed tax rate would be point three four one eight nine one, which is significantly higher than the, than the tax rate we're proposing in this budget. I want to highlight that the sales tax in this budget proposes seven hundred and fifty thousand dollars, which is the same as last year's sales tax. Okay, I'm going to go to, I'll just, the next bullet there, two point five, this budget includes a two point five step increase for employees that qualify at a two percent coal across the board. There was a compensation committee that met, there was a compensation aid list that was formed. Go to the next slide, and I'll, I'll, I'll remind you that that included vacation earnings for the directors, police shift differential for the night shift folks, added New Year's Eve as an official holiday. We moved the leave rollover date from January to October to include, to improve holiday leave schedule flexibility. We added bilingual pay for our court clerk that speaks Spanish, and we added arson investigator certification pay. Next slide. Going back to the list I had before, I wanted to highlight the capital replacement fund is fully funded. This budget includes three hundred and twelve thousand dollars from the general fund revenues and a reallocation of capital funds into the capital replacement fund, plus fifty thousand from the Community Engagement and Enhancement Fund to fund future purchases of capital improvements and equipment in accordance with the capital replacement schedule. The biggest piece of that is fire, just for example, two hundred and eighty-seven thousand, that is being saved for purchases of ambulances and fire engines and major other equipment. I want to talk about the, the water fund. This includes three hundred and ten thousand for system improvements. This is mostly improvements that will be made prior to Phase Two road construction in the northwest port, portion of the city. It also includes water rights and purchasing of water rights, which we're working on some deals right now. I'm pretty optimistic that, that will occur. Also includes allocating two hundred and twenty-nine thousand dollars to future capital replacement funds in, in the future. We've talked about the Crime Control Prevention District, again, to summarize, revenue of about two hundred thousand dollars, expenses about seventy thousand dollars, and I won't rehash that. The Street Projects Fund is that money that we received from the two thousand and twenty-two bond. We've got about four million left into that fund, and in addition to allocation of other funds, this budget proposes spending all remaining funds, which is about five million for that. We may not spend it all, but we're going to budget it, and then we'll see where that goes. The Street Maintenance Fund, we are allocating revenues of one hundred and eighty-seven thousand and expenses of one hundred and fifty thousand. Some of that is towards routine street, street maintenance, and a hundred thousand is, will be allocated towards the bet, the debt payment for the street bond. Court restricted funds, again, not a lot, but proposed budget includes police security and annual software cost. I think, do I have one more slide? Yeah, we have a new Community Engagement Enhancement Engagement Fund, restricted, that represents revenues from the billboards that will be constructed along Loop sixteen oh four, and those funds will be allocated towards city-sponsored events, shred and e-waste expenses, Fiesta Metals, Text My Gov, and capital replacement for the fund, which represents payment, kind of a back payment for the pavilion and the community, the city hall grounds here. The debt fund, as we mentioned before, in two thousand and twenty-two, we, the city issued a voter-approved ten million dollar bond, so we're, we're obviously paying significant amount on the debt fund. The total amount of debt that the city own, the city owns right now that we have to pay back is ten million eight hundred and eighty-three thousand dollars. Of that, one million eight hundred thousand is supported by water revenue. So all the debt that's been issued for the years and years past, plus the twenty-two, twenty thousand, twenty-two debt, is about nine million supported general fund. Okay, so the last thing that I would say is that there's an emphasis on compensation and benefits to account for inflation and rising medical costs. There's a significant amount of drainage and street capital improvements, mostly focused on days of all the road, but also includes approximately one mile residential streets in application in Chavano Creek, and application of street preservation material in Chavano Creek, and replacement of aged signs in, in Chavano Creek. Finally, I'll just say that there's no planned reduction in levels of service.
Thank you very much, Bill. Are there any citizens' questions, comments, or concern concerning the twenty twenty-five, twenty twenty-six budget ordinance? There being no citizen comments or concerns or questions, it is now seven fifty-eight, which brings us to item eight point six, Discussion Action Ordinance O. Twenty twenty-five zero one four, approving and adopting a budget for the City of Chavano Park, Texas, for the fiscal year beginning in October one, twenty twenty-five, and ending September thirtieth, twenty twenty-six, making appropriations for land, for each fund and department, establishing a sinking fund for existing city financial obligations, providing for the levying and collection of a sufficient tax to pay the interest on such sinking fund obligations, repealing conflicting ordinances, providing a savings and severability clause, and declaring an effective date. This will be our, our final reading and require a record vote. Bill, do you have anything else that you'd like to add at this time?
Nothing further.
Okay, so at this time, I will entertain a motion to approve ordinance number O. Twenty twenty-five zero one four. Approving and adopting a budget for the City of Chavano Park, Texas, for the fiscal year beginning in October one, twenty twenty-five, and ending September thirtieth, twenty twenty-six, making appropriations for each fund and department, establishing a sinking fund for existing city financial obligations, providing for the levying and collection of a sufficient tax to pay the interest on such sinking fund obligations, repealing conflicting ordinances, providing a savings and severability clause, and declaring an effective date. Do we have a motion? We have a motion from Lee. Do we have a second?
A second.
We have a second from Buddy. Is there any discussion?
I have a question.
Yeah, Buddy?
Yeah, Bill, for the record, is there any proposal, our money set aside for the Hockenbike Trail in this upcoming fiscal year budget? Thank you.
Any other questions, comments, or concerns? Okay, at this time, I will take a roll call vote. Buddy Alman, yea or nay?
Yea.
Buddy Alman, yea. Maggie Kautz, yea or nay?
Yea.
Maggie Kautz, yea. Conrad Kirkendall, yea or nay?
Yea.
Conrad Kirkendall, yea. Pete Miller, yea or nay?
Yea.
Yeah, Pete Miller, yea. Lee Powers, yea or nay?
Yea.
Pete, Lee Powers, yea. The yays have it, 5-0. Item 8.7, public hearing, proposed fiscal year 2024, 2026, I'm sorry, 2025-2026 tax Bill, it is now 8:01.
Per the tax code, the governing body of each taxing unit shall adopt a tax rate for the current tax year and shall notify the assessor for the unit of the rate adopted. That tax rate consists of two components, each which must be approved separately. So on August 14th, city council approved a motion to propose a tax rate of .312742 per $100 of valuation. That tax rate did not exceed the no new revenue nor the voter approval rate. Technically, a public hearing was not required, but we traditionally do it to give opportunity for people to speak if they want to. The required notice of meaning to vote on the tax rate was published in the paper on September 3, 2025, as well as the city's website. In your packet is a resolution providing for the required language. Within section one is the breakout of the MNO and the INS rate. Section two of the resolution includes the required statement, this tax rate will raise more taxes for maintenance and operations than last year's rate. That concludes my summary.
Thank you very much, Bill. It is now 8:02. Do we have any citizens' questions, comments, or concerns? There being no citizen questions, comments, or concerns, the public hearing portion of this agenda item is closed at 8:02. Item 8.6, discussion action ordinance O.2025, whoops, I'm sorry, 8.8, discussion action resolution R.2025-012, adopting the city of Chavano Park effective tax rate. This will be a record vote. Bill, anything else that you'd like to add at this time?
Nothing further.
Okay. At this time, I will recognize Alderman, Conrad Kirkendall. Conrad?
Mayor, I'd like to make a motion as, to adopt resolution R.2025-012, setting a total tax rate of 0.312742, with the maintenance and operation rate being 0.275606, and the interest and sinking rate being 0.037136, as followed by law.
Okay. We have a motion from Conrad. Do we have a second? We have a second from Maggie. We have a motion to adopt resolution R.2025-012, setting a total tax rate of 0.132742, with the maintenance and operation rate being 0.275606, and the interest and sinking rate being 0.037136. This will be a roll call vote. Buddy Alman, yea or nay?
Yea.
Buddy Alman, yea. Maggie Kautz, yea or nay?
Yea.
Maggie Kautz, yea. Conrad Kirkendall, yea or nay?
Yea.
Conrad Kirkendall, yea. Pete Miller, yea or nay?
Yea.
Pete Miller, yea. Lee Powers, yea or nay?
Yea.
Pete, Lee Powers, yea. The motion passes 5-0. We're going to take a, we're going to take a temporary recess, we'll get back in five Turning from a brief recess. Brings us to item 8.9, discussion action, record vote to ratify the property tax increase reflected in the fiscal year 2025-2026 budget. This will be a record vote. Bill, do you have anything that you'd like to add at this time?
Just per local government code, adoption of the budget that will require raising more revenue from property taxes than the previous year requires a separate vote of the governing body to ratify the property tax increase reflected into the budget, and contains the following statement that, that corresponds with the above vote, an eight-point or larger type, and you can see that there, if you want me to read it, I can read that, Mayor.
Okay, thank you very much. At this time, I'll entertain a motion to take a record vote to ratify the property tax increase reflected in the fiscal year 2025-2026 adopted budget. I'd prefer whoever makes the motion says exactly as the city staff has said forth. Okay, Conrad?
This one? Yeah, okay. I'd like to make a motion to take a record vote to ratify the property tax increase reflected in the fiscal year 2025-26 adopted budget.
Okay.
Second.
And Conrad has made a motion, and Pete has seconded the motion.
Second.
We will now take a record, there being no discussion, we will now take a record vote. Buddy Alman, yea or nay?
Yea.
Buddy Alman, yea. Maggie Kautz, yea or nay?
Yea.
Maggie Kautz, yea. Conrad Kirkendall, yea or nay?
Yea.
Conrad Kirkendall, yea. Pete Miller, yea or nay?
Yea.
Pete Miller, yea. Lee Powers, yea or nay?
Yea.
Lee Powers, yea. Motion is 5-0 in favor. Brings us to item 810, action discussion ordinance O.2025-016, amending the fiscal year 2025-2026 budget. Amendment number two, this is an administrative change. I'll recognize Bill and Brenda if necessary.
And Brenda.
Brenda?
All right, thank you, Mayor. Good evening, Council. So we have budget amendment number two for fiscal year 2025. It just impacts two funds in the general fund. We have the fire department, they're continuing to incur some numerous and significant unanticipated expenditures, including vehicle repairs and maintenance, an additional $9,000 for suspension AC and brake valve repairs on the platform, and in building maintenance, $5,000 for replacement of two water heaters. So we're proposing an increase of $9,000 to the EMS fees, and $6,000 to the towing contract revenues to fund the increase of $5,000 to building repairs and maintenance, and $10,000 to vehicle maintenance and repairs. And in the police department, we've incurred abatement costs for a certain property due to code compliance, and we've recently been invoiced just under $31,000 for the company that has performed the abatement services for us. We're looking for more quotes on the disposal of the oil that was removed from the property, but we currently have one quote for $5,300. So while the city will be billing the property owner for these costs according to the, the, to the court ordered agreement, we don't know when we will be receiving those funds, and it may result in a property lien being filed. So we are proposing an increase in professional services abatement in the police department of $36,300, funded by an offsetting increase to municipal court fines of the same amount. So if approved as presented, these amendments would increase the general fund 2025 budgeted revenues and budget expenditures by $51,300. Then in the street projects fund, this is purely a budgetary reporting purpose. I'm requesting that we are going to reduce the expenditures for fiscal year '25 because we did not get our project completed during the budget process last year. We had planned for everything to be expended, and we're not going to get all that expended. So I need some carryover from this year, otherwise, at the end of the budgetary reporting for next year, it looks like I'm 2.5 in the hole, 2.5 million in the hole. So it's, it's purely housekeeping, purely housekeeping.
So, so you lost $2.5 million, Brenda?
No, I did not lose $2.5 million. I don't even like it if I'm off a penny.
I know you don't. Okay. Bill, is there anything that you'd like to add at this point?
Nothing further.
Okay. Do we have a motion to approve ordinance O.2025-016, amending the city of Chavano Park fiscal year 2024-25 budget as proposed in exhibit A?
So move.
We have a motion from Lee and a second from Maggie. We're now open for discussion. Okay, I do have one question. If you could get back with us and tell us the nature of the lien that we would be placing, whether it is the equivalent of a tax lien, or whether it is the equivalent of a purchase money mortgage lien, to where we can enforce it, whether it's a homestead or not, or whether it is subject to the homestead limitation?
Absolutely.
If y'all could get back with us as just a, something to bring us individually by an email later on.
Will come.
Okay. Yeah, Lee?
Just for housekeeping, my own head, are the veh, have the vehicles of that place been taken care of? Are they still in place that has to be handled separately?
That's a separate issue.
And?
It's in place.
It did take place.
It's in pla, they're, they're still in place, and I can talk to you offline on that.
Let's do it.
Okay. We have a motion to approve ordinance O.2025-016, amending the city of Chavano Park fiscal year 2024-25 budget as proposed in exhibit A. There being no further discussion, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign, the motion carries 5-0, which brings us to item number nine. Do we have a motion to adjourn?
So move.
We have a motion from Pete with a second from Lee. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign, the motion carries 5-0.